Welcome.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Please stand for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Harding.
Thanks. You can be seated, please. So the seven of us are kind of like a family and one minute we could be laughing together and the next minute we might be disagreeing about something, but like a family, we're also a team and we know that we must work together for a common goal and that is to make Omaha a better place for all. One more thing about a family, sometimes we have relatives that experience some health issues and when those occur, we pray that they find the cause and that they're able to enjoy a full recovery. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you being here and look forward to your testimony on our many items today. Please turn your cell phones off or turn them to vibrate. And our first item today is we have a presentation by Councilmember Bagley regarding the Irish Ambassador who will soon be visiting Omaha. Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I have a proclamation to read today. Whereas Irish Ambassador to the United States, Daniel Mulhall will make his first visit to Nebraska from February 26 through March 1st, 2022, and along with his wife, Greta, will be honored guests at the Nebraska Statehood Dinner, celebrating Nebraska's admission to the Union on March 1st, 1867. And whereas Irish American Heritage Month celebrates Irish American communities throughout the nation and recognizes the conspicuous contributions of Irish immigrants in helping to establish the city of Omaha, culminating with the St. Patrick's Day Parade on March 17th. And whereas the city council of the city of Omaha recognizes the official designation of March as Irish American Heritage Month by the President of the United States. And whereas 2022 marks the 20th anniversary of the creation of Omaha's fourth sister city, NACE, and County Kildare, Ireland, and the 150th anniversary of the Omaha St. Patrick's Day Parade and will be commemorated with a visit by NACE Mayor Emeritus, Timmy Conway. And now therefore be it resolved that the city of Omaha officially welcomes Ambassador and Mrs. Mulhall and designates March 1st, 2022 as Daniel and Greta Mulhall Day. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the city of Omaha to be affixed on this 15th day of February, 2022. A couple remarks I'd like to make in honor of this is the son of an Irish father and Irish mother, it's pretty exciting that is the elected representative and the honored city councilman to be sitting here giving this, the comments on, my family, we came from County Cary, did a little digging on this, and my father's, his, my aunt married an Irishman from Schlegel and my aunt Mary Ann married an Irishman from Limerick. So I had the fun to go visit in 2017 with my family to Ireland and it really was amazing to see the country where my immigrants and many people from this community that built Omaha came from. I heard from several people in my district when they saw this proclamation, on the pride they had and the merit, I'd like to thank her for, there's going to be an honor for Ambassador Mulhall and his wife here in a couple of weeks with the city. But as Irish immigrants, they helped build Omaha and the stories and the contributions they made, including the son of a teacher and mailman that became a union leader and city council member that has a great honor on behalf of the Irish and all the immigrants that built Omaha, to honor Ambassador Mulhall when he comes here in a couple of weeks. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Capriano located west of 210th and Emmett Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communication and opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, excuse me, Reagan Pence with Lamprey Neareston representing my client 14710 West Dodge Road. Proponent of the project, approximately a 15 acre site located in Elkhorn, about two-thirds of a mile from the Elkhorn Downtown District, closer to the Maple and Pacific Entrance. We are looking to create a combination of multifamily and single-family project. We are rezoning, proposing to rezone from agriculture to R6 PUD to the south and R5 to the north, in partnership with Habitat for Humanity for the lots to the north. A little bit more about the site. Currently, we are in compliance.
Yeah, I think, there you go. Might help to push it all the way up to the arm there. Okay, that's good.
Currently in compliance with the Omaha Master Plan. We have R5 to the north. We are designing the R6 PUD designed to the R5 more restrictive zoning standards for the multifamily. The multifamily with, you know, it's a spectrum of multifamily, this is a lower density multifamily, it's a two-story product. We do have a series of outlots. It is a very challenging site with grading. This park's at approximately two to one and we have a garage per unit, whether it's built into the building or detached. With regards to setbacks by code, the side yards are supposed to be 25, or excuse me, 10 feet. We actually have 25 to the south and then we have 60 for a rear yard setback to the north, so considerably larger than what is required by code. With regards to the buffer yards, there is a 20-foot buffer yard requirement to the south and the east. Again, we are providing a 25-foot setback or a buffer yard to the south and then a 60-foot to the east. So again, more than code is required. Drainage, we are capturing all of the site or site drainage. We have provided PCSMP, a drainage study and a grading plan for review with the city. We have provided a preliminary, or excuse me, a traffic study that shows the impact of this project to the Elkhorn Drive and surrounding streets. Currently, there's minimal impact. It still operates at a B level, which is considered also very good. We are providing a connection, public right-of-way connection from the existing stub at Emmett Street to Elkhorn Drive and then we are extending the stub at, excuse me, Cleveland Street to the south. And then we are also providing a stub to the north. So with that, I'd like to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number six today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Motion in a second. Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero.
Thanks.
Items seven through 10 can be considered together for Westbury Farm Replat 2, located southeast of 218th and Karen Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven and eight, ordinance is to rezone this property from R4 District to DR District and R4 District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 10, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seven through 10 of today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Members of Council, John Bachman, 10250 Regency Circle. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, a resolution to approve the amendment to the downtown northeast redevelopment plan for a nine-acre project site generally known as 1804 Capitol Avenue, which will consist of housing, retail, office space, and parking. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few questions just for the record, just so that people on the Zoom call as well as in District 2 are kind of informed about what's going on in the community. And so I'd like for the city planning department to come up and answer this question and provide information about the components of a comprehensive redevelopment plan because that's what we're talking about in this agenda item today.
Sure. Dave Fanslaw, City Planning. I didn't hear a question, but I'll tell you why we're here. Okay. So yeah, it's a, it's an amendment to an existing redevelopment plan, the Northeast Downtown Redevelopment Plan that was approved a few decades ago. That plan has been amended from time to time as projects come along. This is just another project within that boundary and is the reason why we're here today to amend that. At pre-council, you had asked what we do as far as redevelopment plans. So we start out by identifying obviously the area and any general direction that we want a certain area to go with some goals in mind. We do a inventory of existing conditions, so building conditions, infrastructure conditions, roadway conditions, zoning, land use, kind of get all the information about the area that we want to be a part of a redevelopment plan. And then we set out, then we set out a development plan, what is basically the goal of that redevelopment plan. We usually follow it up with some strategies and a whole bunch of information, again, related to those existing conditions.
Okay.
It's a pattern that we follow time and time again.
Is there any way, I need to have that information available for my record so that I can review it. And so at this time, I would like to, because I didn't see that as a part of the attachment, any of that extra information such as transportation. Perhaps you have something in mind in terms of a developer coming in over there at the once-was Civic Auditorium. Is there a developer in mind that you, that city planning has in mind to do something over there? I'm not sure because that information was lacking.
Well, we've been working, well, because it's not necessarily part of this plan. But yeah, we have a developer in mind to redevelop the Civic Auditorium site. This particular amendment to the Northeast Downtown redevelopment area was at Planning Board on January 5th and we sent city council staff, the entire agenda and all the attachments for all of those Planning Board cases on December 30th. So they should have been given to all seven of you.
And so did that also include things like, in your, on your redevelopment plan, it should provide information regarding public transportation, public utilities, recreational and community facilities and other public improvements?
Again, this is, I don't want to interrupt. This is a amendment to that overall plan specifically for the Civic Auditorium site.
Okay. And so, no, that wasn't included in there?
It's included in the original plan.
But not when you have an amended plan such as this?
We, I'm, I'd have to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look over my shoulder and hopefully Jen Taylor can come help me out. She, she helped us author that plan.
Good afternoon, Members of City Council, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. And to be clear, this is an amendment to the downtown northeast plan. The downtown northeast plan from 30 or 40 years ago was a kind of an overall general concept as to how we wanted to redevelop properties within the area. Periodically, when we actually have an actual project that comes along, we'll amend that plan to specifically identify and describe that particular project. So in the amendment to the redevelopment plan that you have before you, there actually are sections that describe the existing conditions in the project area, including land use, occupancy, conditions, and zoning, whether or not there's any historic properties in the area, the present valuation of the property that's subject to the redevelopment plan, as well as a description of the project itself, street conditions, grades, utilities, also the project costs and the projected public financing associated with that. Those are all contained in the amendment that's actually included in your packet that's before you today. Happy to answer any questions on that. The last amendment we had specific to the civic site, just so that you're aware, was three or four years ago, we amended the downtown northeast redevelopment plan to describe a redevelopment project for the civic site that actually was the demolition of the Civic Auditorium. And that plan authorized the demolition of the structure and authorized the city to utilize redevelopment bonds to pay for the cost of that demolition. This particular amendment describes a proposed project that we're looking or entertaining to conduct or foster or participate in on the site, describes the project to the extent that there is a general description of the project, what we need to do. And approval of that plan will facilitate us moving forward to proceed with that project.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No, thank you. Thank you as well. So I will go ahead and, I will go ahead and make a motion to accept the resolution.
Motion in a second to approve. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just gonna say, and I think Jen touched on it, but I think that the original downtown northeast redevelopment plan might have been 1997. So that's, that's how old the original plan is. And it's been amended many times over the years, but just a bit of unused, unneeded trivia.
New city council person's on board here, so it's very much needed.
Thank you. Councilman Clermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this question may be for the Planning Director, Mr. Fanslaw. As we heard earlier, the land use, occupancy, condition, and zoning category, obviously it says loud and clear in the second sentence, the project area includes the former Civic Auditorium site.
Sure.
I've been briefed on that site numerous times. It still sits empty. Is it too early to ask, do we have a project intended to be used in that site?
We're working on that right now.
Nothing you can tell us about?
We've already.
If you're sworn to secrecy, I understand, but this is the time for communication.
We're not sworn to secrecy. It's, it's in the, it's in the
Okay.
Plan. Page two. So you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So on the top, second paragraph, redevelopment plan. Want me to read it to you? I'm serious, I'm asking.
What I would like and what everybody in Omaha would like, when we have these parcels of land that sit empty and we have all these development changes.
Sure.
We would like to know what the developers bring into the site to benefit the city of Omaha.
I understand. It's in the plan.
Okay.
You want me to read what's in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and read it to me.
Sure. All right.
Further ado, thank you.
What's that?
Thank you. Yeah, read it, please.
Yes, sure. So the redevelopment plan proposes 250 to 300 market unit rate apartments, 120 to 140 affordable apartments, retail, main level, multifamily, 20 to 25 townhomes, forced sale surrounding the site on either side, and parking.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
It's important that you read that.
That's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Clermo, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero.
Without objection, we'll move item number 13 up on the agenda next and then take item number 12 at the request of Councilmember Johnson and also the applicant. Madam Clerk.
Item 13, an ordinance to approve the Forever North Housing and Multi-Model Transportation Strategy located in an area generally bound by Ames Avenue on the north, Coming Street on the south, 20th Street on the east, and Highway 75 on the west. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is communication and support. C and D are amendments proposed by Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you. And I didn't interrupt the clerk there, but I will remind folks to turn your cell phones off. We won't ask again. We have a number of folks on these two agenda items, number 13 first and then number 12. There'll be two separate public hearings on these items. I think we have a lot of folks here to speak to them. I just want to get a sense of who intends to speak today for our planning purposes. If you might raise your hand if you intend to speak on item 13 as a proponent? Thank you. And how about opponents? Okay, thank you. What we'll do is, I don't intend to do, institute any kind of time limit or a three-minute rule like we sometimes do, but I would encourage you to try to limit your remarks to three minutes so we can hear from everyone and then also get to questions from council members. So having said that, we'll start with number 13. Proponents, please. The public hearing and vote is today. We'll hear from the Planning Department.
Good afternoon. Kelly Johnston Dorsey with the Planning Department. Forever North is a strategic action-oriented approach to enhance the ongoing community development efforts and to provide guidance for future development along the North 24th Street corridor. The boundaries are Ames Avenue on the north, Coming Street on the south, Highway 75 on the west, and 20th Street on the east. The community vision is the North 24th Street corridor developing into a vibrant, livable community that values existing residents, attracts new community members, and offers opportunities and experiences everyone can enjoy. This document is intended to be purposeful guidance that will attract new business but also protect current businesses and residents. Community engagement for Forever North was largely conducted in 2019. Engagement efforts included focusing community group meetings, stakeholder meetings, mailers, a Facebook page, media coverage, open office hours, place assessments, e-bike rides and tours, a block party, a two-day community design workshop, door-to-door canvassing, and online surveys. The plan was largely completed in 2019. However, announcements from Metro Transit regarding the Metro Next Study put a pause on the plan adoption until that study was complete, as the potential enhanced transit on North 24th Street could shift recommendations regarding transportation and land use. Forever North includes recommendations on land use and development, pedestrian connections, bicycle connections, transit, vehicles and parking, art, history, culture, and services and programs for people. This plan benefited from community support during the Planning Board hearing and the Planning Board unanimously recommended approval. I will keep my statements brief. Manny Cook was the city's neighborhood planner behind the Forever North effort and is, he is here to testify as well.
Thank you. And was that my friend Preston Love with his phone that was still on? I thought I'd bust you there, Preston, but you got it handled, right? All right, thank you. Mr. Cook.
All right. Yep. Manny, Manny Cook, let's see, 2514 North 24th Street. Here representing myself, but then also Spark, which is the organization I work with now. Like Kelly said, led the Forever North Study. But I'll just dive into it and I'll just start by saying Forever North means forever, the north side, and even that name came from the community through that engagement process. And the number one thing that was mentioned by community members is that we do not want to be displaced, gentrified, or however else you want to define the forced removal of existing residents from our communities. Kelly stole my thunder a little bit because you mentioned all the community engagement that we did, so I'm gonna skip over that. But the strategies associated housing and transportation studies showed the immense demand for housing in the area, and this was even prior to COVID. So I know during COVID, the housing crisis that kind of came to the surface, that already existed. So anyway, a few notes from the study that I think are important are that there's nearly 100 acres of vacant land within a quarter mile of 24th Street, that area from Ames to Coming, and demand for 90 to 195 new housing units per year through 2037. And this is coming straight from the document, so that's a total of 1,850 to 3,000, or 900 housing units within that area and in the surrounding area as well. Some of the organizations that have already referenced this strategy are the state's Missing Middle workforce housing, the North Omaha Recovery Plan. It was referenced by the city to make sidewalk improvements around the 24th and Pratt area. Metro, I think Kelly mentioned this a little bit too, but they succeeded this strategy by starting to work on new transit along the corridor. They, this also helped them select 24th Street or that area for that study and for improved transit going forward. Let's see, streetscape planning by local organizations like the BID also referenced this plan. I tried and called it strategy because I know we have a plan coming up next to help. It's confusing sometimes. But anyway, so they referenced this strategy. And then there's been several facade improvement projects, including a project that my organization works on, which we call the Fabric Bays, which is just north of the Old Love Jazz, so 2514 through 2522 North 24th Street. So we've been working with partners to improve those facades and those buildings as a whole, activate those spaces. Also Spencer's Barbershop is another project, the Carnation Ballroom. And there's a lot of other projects that are underway and will come of the, after the proposed 24th and Lake Development Plan. North Omaha Trail Project, that's something that was referenced in this strategy and that is a project that I'm working on right now and that we will be breaking ground on hopefully at the end of March, just depending on the weather. But if it's like it is today, we will have no problems. And then is also referenced by North and Tele Services forthcoming 24th and Lake Development. And those are somewhat larger projects, but the people and community and community organizations on 24th Street have also done their part to accomplish many of the quick wins and early action projects laid out in Forever North to start improving the area. And by my estimate, I would say at least about 15 of those quick wins or early action projects have been accomplished. So some of those things include working to create a cultural entrepreneur incubator. And if you haven't heard of Culture House, it's happened. And if you haven't heard of them, I would Google them or look them up on Facebook or Instagram or anything like that, or drive down 24th Street to 24th and work. North Omaha Trail Project, I mentioned that. Another thing that was outlined was coordinate community-led tours. So we have So, we have the North Omaha Legacy Tours, and I won't steal anyone's thunder on that. And then Just Ride, which is a community bike ride to Ali, which we have, we've had 40 to 50 people from North Omaha riding on bikes through the community and into downtown on several occasions as well. Other things, creative programming of the Bryant Center, and friends of mine, Sandy Adah and Sherman Wells have done a great job of continuing and doing that. You know what? I could go on and on, but like I said, there's at least 15 things that have been accomplished so far. And so, basically, the community has already started to fulfill this strategy, and any opponents to this strategy would be opponents to how the communities living and working along North 24th Street want to see the area grow. They would be opponents to community engagement, and opponents to equitable development in North Omaha. And any elected officials who would dare stand against this strategy would simply be abandoning their responsibilities to the community. So, in short, what does the community want to see? The community wants to see infrastructure improvements that improve their quality of life. The community wants to see 24th Street redeveloped like a Main Street, like a urban downtown area, and like a Black Wall Street. We want it to be like it used to be, if not better. The community wants well-designed, high-quality, affordable housing, and I think that's a duh. And then the community wants safe pedestrian-oriented streets that prioritize people who live and work in the community, because traffic speeds on 24th Street and the surrounding neighborhood streets is a problem, as well as the design of those streets. And then, again, the number one thing the community wants is protection from further displacement and gentrification. And in the plan, the number one priority under development is to protect residents from displacement. And I don't think there's any other city documents that I know of that have this type of language in them. This strategy is built on what the community wants, and will help guide both development and infrastructure improvements while also serving as a foundation for city council to start developing formal anti-displacement policies. And I have some of those if you want them. I might give them to you later because they're in my bag over here. But the community and city departments have already done their job, and then some, and now I think it's time for you to do your job and to take responsibility for equitable development on 24th Street. And I look forward to your unanimous vote on this strategy. And I also support the development of an implementation committee as laid out in the plan. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your personal work on these plans. Next proponent, please.
Dewan Lamont Hayes, 5835 Corby Street. I had the pleasure of working with Manny Cook on the steering committee for the Forever North Study, and I personally have grown up in and along 24th Street most of my life, and after graduating, returned to Omaha to work with the Union for Contemporary Art, and ultimately to start NOISE and lead the engagement. And one of the biggest gaps that we saw were, there's a lot happening with the city making decisions about us, without us, and we have, this has been a pattern for generations, not for lack of any actual studies or formal attempts, because we've had many, many studies just starting in the 70s of what should happen, making sure that a lot of this engagement is meaningful, and that the people feel that they are part of the development, and that the development and what it looks like, especially the aesthetics of it, reflect what the community needs, and that everything that we're building in our built environment is actually bringing us together rather than driving us apart. And this type of plan that includes a level of engagement and communication and active strategy across generations, across experiences, is something that the city of Omaha really needs to take heed, and as an example of how you actually engage community in decision-making, because we have record of people saying, this is what I like, and this is why, and this is what my experience has been thus far. And so, I please ask that you vote in support of Forever North and the North 24th Street Redevelopment Plan, because this is an opportunity for us to really take our future into our own hands, and really make sure we have an informed, thoughtful approach to redevelopment and revitalization of a community. So, if you have any questions, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
It's a pleasure to be able to come to this city council and talk about good things and North Omaha. North Omaha is so rich in history and culture. Yet, I give tours and have given tours of North Omaha for years, and I often point at a building that has boarded up and has been boarded up since the 60s. It is part of our history that there has not been any serious or thoughtful development in North Omaha. We've had lots of development plans on paper and verbally and all of that. But those plans had commonalities, negative quite frankly. They didn't involve the community. They didn't involve displacement of people without a plan or thought or with heart. So, I stand as a proponent of this plan because it is unique. And now I can take a tour up and down the 24th Street corridor, and I can point to some of our wonderful assets, and some of our wonderful culture, and some of our wonderful history. But now I can point to 24th and Lake on the northeast corner and say, that's going to be a new development, and that's going to be a new development from people from our community. And I can walk back and forth down the corridor and look with joy and celebrate where we're going. And so, I'd ask that you city council would totally understand the bigger picture here is that North Omaha has been held hostage too long. It's time. And this particular plan I surely endorse because it's doing development, but it's doing it in the right way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Carmen Tapio, 1500 North 24th Street, Suite 111. And it's really an honor to stand before you today and just to recognize the moment that we were at as a community. Thank you, Mr. President, and to all the council members. I stand in support of the Forever North Plan as well as the 24th and Lake Redevelopment Plan. Our regional economy is robust, and it is growing, and it is inspiring to see the continued momentum, the momentum that we are experiencing, much of it because of the work of the people in this room and you that are on the dais today. My company, North and Tele Services, is a for-private and for-profit enterprise, and it is one of the fastest-growing businesses in our state as well as in our country, according to Ink Magazine. We understand the benefits of doing business and locating our business in North Omaha, where there is access to skilled talent pool that has an 80% high school and above educational attainment rate compared to the rest of our state, something that is not well-known. And that 68110 ZIP code has double the professionals at 16.4% versus 8.8 statewide. Our company provides entry-level, middle-income, and high-wage jobs in the community. Our mission is creating jobs and changing lives. We grow and develop leaders and talent, and we do that while providing exceptional service to our customers that include commercial and government entities. About a third of our employees carry security clearances to do the federal contracting work that we do. Over six years ago, we started the company, and we made a promise that we, as we continued to grow, our success would translate directly back into the hands of the community. And I tell you all of this because we believe North Omaha is our next economy, and one of our greatest assets for economic development and contribution to not only to our community, but also our state. It is diverse, it is growing, and it is integral to Nebraska's overall success. We are making a $50 million development project investment in the heart of North Omaha, as Preston mentioned, at 24th and Lake Streets. That includes new corporate headquarters for our company, as well as affordable housing for rent and for ownership. We're anticipating 80 to 100 housing units, as well as mixed retail, food service, and daycare on premises, and community-facing spaces as well. The historic relevance of the location is not lost on us, nor is the opportunity that exists. We are using these plans as our guiding principles as we undertake this development. The plans serve to guide the development and make way for additional development, infrastructure, land availability, transportation, zoning, and permitting, that we cannot fully accomplish without these plans being approved. Our belief is in the promise of North Omaha so strong, and it is so strong, that we named our real estate company Forever North Real Estate. And I just want to add that if we continue to listen to our young leaders, who are often seen as the leaders of tomorrow, I actually believe are the leaders of today, we will go very far, very fast. And much of the work of these plans came from our current leaders, our current young leaders, that will be speaking here today. There has been extensive stakeholder engagement and involvement, and it's time to move forward, and as they say, strike while the iron is hot. And we believe that the iron is really hot right now. The community is behind these plans, and it's time to move, and the ability and capacity to embark upon the development is happening right now in the community. The developments will be transformative and will serve as catalysts as, for additional much-needed development in the future. These plans reflect agreement that it is time, and not only is it time, but there's also a way and a pathway in ensuring that the community's priorities are not only listened to, but also maintained. This is about jobs, it is about homes, and it is about community building. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for your investment in North Omaha.
Happy to do it. Thank you.
Other proponents, please. Don't be shy, I know we have a lot here.
My name is Dana Murray. I am the executive director of the Future North Omaha Music and Arts, 2510 North 24th Street. It's a beautiful day. I usually have a lot of symbolism in the words that I say. I will try to be brief today. I spent a lot of time and lived a lot of my adult life in New York City. I see the commonality between a lot of our underserved or, or communities of color. Knowing that when you speak about it being a black and white thing, whatever the problem, that is easily puts someone on the defense. I tend to speak about those things and a majority versus the minority. And the fact is, the minority usually draws the short end of the stick of progress. I'm going to tell you guys a story. When I lived in Harlem, I used to look out my back window, and the apartment building in back, it was like a U shape, and people would throw the trash out the window down into the alley. After about three, four months, the trash would be about knee-high, then the city would come and clean it up. Then people would throw the trash out the window again, and they would come and clean it up. This happened time after time. You go up to Spanish Harlem, Spanish Harlem was pretty clean. You had people out on their stoops, sweeping the stoop up. It seemed brighter, yet you were in the same basic community. I say to myself, God, why are they so uncivilized and savage? As I got older, wiser, I asked myself, what would make a people have that little respect and lack of sense of ownership that they would throw trash out of their window? Because, see, I've been all over the world, traveling as a musician, and what I've realized is people are way more the same than they are different, wherever you go. Our communities are in a depressed state. That is a fact. Why would they not be? Unless no one knows anything about our history. So, why would they not be depressed? So, we are either going to instill things that are going to right that ship, or we're going to just go along and hope that it just works itself out. I'm not a political person, I'm a musician, right? I've done more talking about what I want to do in the last year of my life than I've ever done. I'm a doer. I like to get in the trenches and get stuff done. But for the sake of this, I would just like to say that most of what I see is people asking for favors. Can you please do this for me? Can you please do that for me? I'm not asking for any favors, zero favors. I'm asking you to do your jobs, right? I don't know how many of you saw the documentary on Tom Brady, but what was pointed to me was he said, I always hold my teammates accountable. I'm not asking you to overachieve, to try to go in the game, do anything special. We practice hard. Just do your job, right? No favors. I'd also like to say congratulations for being a part of this historic moment. This is special. It feels somehow different now, right? And you're welcome. What do you mean? You're welcome for all of these incredible blueprints that all these city leaders from North Omaha. There's so many bright, intelligent thinkers and doers that are presenting things that are going to be absolutely transformative to that community. And if North Omaha thrives, guess what? Omaha thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents. Senator Chambers, welcome.
Members of the council, my name is Ernie Chambers. My address is 1825 Vinnie Street. I'm one block north of, one block east of this little development that they're talking about here today. But my community comprises all of the territory where black people live. My blood is in that community. That community is in my blood. I will be 85 years old the 10th of July. Fifty of those years have been squandered in elective office, 46 in the legislature, more than anybody else, four on the learning community, which my legislation and my efforts helped to create. I could stand here and give a list of what are called accomplishments and achievements that would cause people to say, I didn't know that, or that's not true. But if you have the kind of personality that I have, nothing that is done is of any value if the problems that were being addressed thereby continue to remain. Black people still have our vote diminished. Our political power that we should have as a result of people in office is not there. It's what they call de minimis. Our presence, but no power. I saw that as a young person... I saw that as a young person because I did a lot of reading. I read white people's books. So I decided, when I got into the legislature, I would learn the white people's rules and beat them at their own game, which, without boasting and without being successfully challenged, I succeeded in doing to a remarkable degree. When I used to come before the city council, it was in an old building. This didn't even exist. I was in my late teens. There was a fellow named Jacob Berger, who ruled the council and, in effect, the city with an iron hand. He was known as the speaker with a silver tongue. And as a youngster, I said on one occasion, "It's nice to be a silver-tongued orator." But that orator needs to be careful, that that silver tongue does not turn on him and cut his own throat. I even ran for that city council. The elections were at large, no chance to be elected, and I knew it. But it gave me an opportunity to talk and demonstrate that despite the ability that I had, I would never be elected as long as white people had to vote for me. So I got a bill through the legislature. It was vetoed four times. The fourth time, I overrode the governor's veto and required the election of the council by district, and without exception, I don't believe one of you who are on it now would be on this council if it were not by district. And white people resent what I say because I don't come with my head bowed, my feet shuffling, my thanking white people for everything, because substantially speaking, substantively speaking, nothing has changed for us from the time I was a small child at Luthrop School, which was almost all white, and they read a story called Little Black Sambo. I was the black child in the room. Prior to the reading of that story, if a child stumbled, dropped a book, and they laughed, the teacher would cease everything and say, "We don't laugh at each other." I'm not gonna take all afternoon, perhaps, but I see the local constabulary has a representative to my right, and I can be escorted from the room, but I need not be escorted, just tell me, "Leave." That's what I've been hearing all my life.
Well, I know you're used to the three-minute rules in the legislature, so we'll try to wrap it up a little bit, if that's okay with you.
I couldn't understand you.
I know you're used to the time limits in the state legislature, so we'll try and keep to a shorter timeline if possible, so we encourage you to wrap up the remarks as pertains to item number 13.
You said the time limit?
There are no time limits specifically, but I'm encouraging you to stay within that timeframe, so we can hear from everyone today.
Okay. And I knew that would happen, but I knew nobody would throw me out of here, and I don't come here that often. And you'll hear things from me you won't hear from anybody else. But this, I must tell you, and I had to lead up to it, because there are people saying, "Don't teach critical race theory because it will make little white children feel they have to apologize for being white." Well, my parents taught me to respect all teachers because they would teach me things that I would not learn. But they've made a mistake because they didn't warn me that these people I was taught to respect would humiliate me, ridicule me, when I couldn't fight back and didn't know how to fight back. That story of Little Black Sambo, for those who may not know, was a caricature of black people when they had the drawings. It was a child in garish clothing, a black face, a red, big mouth, two eyes like sausages with dots on them, and when the picture was shown, the little white kids not only laughed, but they looked at me. The teacher, I was waiting to hear say, as she said about the little white children, "We don't laugh at each other." That was not said. So from the time I was a child, I knew that a difference existed. And now, to get to the matter at hand, by the time the speculators have gotten their foothold, those who don't live in our community have been given benefits, then there is the formalization of what has been done so that those who planted their seeds can now reap the benefits. Whatever happens in that small bit of North Omaha affects every place where black people live, as far as I'm concerned. My arm is a small percentage of my body, but if it was cut off, it would affect the whole. I want black people who are going to shout "Hosanna" to pay close attention to the development in that area. Maple Street on the north, Clark Street or Franklin on the south, the highway on the west, and 20th or Florence Boulevard on the east. I've lived in that area all my life, a bicycle ride from where I was born. So I'm not gonna stand up here and condemn you for what you're doing, but I'm not going to praise you either. When you see land being cleared, and nobody in our community has the money or the wherewithal to clear it, when you see outsiders purchasing property that is beyond our power to purchase, that land is going to be held like a plantation, meaning that there will be those who don't live in that area who will control it, who will get the main benefit. But as with the story of Lazarus, then I'm going to stop. They will eat the crumbs that fell off the rich man's table. And some people think that the only dog in the Bible mentioned had a name, and the dog's name was "Moreover," because the Bible says, "Moreover," as far as Lazarus there. "Moreover, the dogs licked his sores." I'm not a sore licker. I don't create sores. I do what I think ought to be done, and to the extent that I can be of assistance in achieving anything that will help my community or substantial part of it, I will do it. Any person on this council, I don't care who you are, what your politics are, what your religion is, if you have a proposal that you want to see in North Omaha, any part of it, I will help you if it's of value. I will fight you if it's not. And I'm not going to degrade and demean those people who have done this little bit, which will be done. But what is being done shows how much is needed and how little of it is being done. I have no disrespect for any of the people on this council because you're gonna cast a vote today. My last point, there should be a member on whatever committee, council, or however it's designated, from the district where any development of this size and magnitude is to occur. So with reference to this item, the person who represents the second city council district ought to be a member and not just a token. That person should be listened to and heeded, and I would advise that person to maintain contact with the community. And I want to let all the people on the council know, you're not going to have to sit through these talks from me because I will not be coming down here because I don't want to waste my time or yours.
Thank you. Next proponent, please. We need to refrain from applause, please, in the audience. Next proponent.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf in support of the Forever North and 24th Lake redevelopment plans, and I want to thank the City Planning Department for all their hard work and for all those individuals who spoke about the support for this program. My name is Ralph Kleinsmith. I serve on the North 24th Street BID as secretary on behalf of Logier Corporation, where I have worked for over 25 years at, and many of those years and countless hours on 24th and Sailor at our West Omaha plant. It's kind of ironic how we call it West Omaha, but that gives you an idea how long we've been in North Omaha. That was our West Plant operation, built across the street from our East Plant operation. Our engineers were never very creative.
And your address, just for the record?
I apologize. The exact address of West Plant is 4224 North 22nd Street. Logier has been an avid supporter of the North Omaha community for more than 66 years. A brief history of the company's involvement and the community demonstrates our roots are deep in North Omaha. The company was established in 1956 with an office and manufacturing plant on North 21st Street. That was our East Plant operation. In 1970, with the support from the North Omaha community, Logier expanded our manufacturing operations by adding over 200,000 square feet across the street, which is now our West Plant, North 22nd Street operation. Today, that position and that facility provides jobs, good-paying jobs, for over 200 employees from the community. The company, again, expanded in 1976 with the help of our North Omaha community. We added three facilities of very high-paying jobs, good-paying jobs, livable wage jobs on 6336 Pershing Drive. We put in facilities that equaled over 1.2 million square feet and 1,000 employees. These jobs provide the community, starting wages of $45,000 a year, up to an average of, depending on what skilled position it is, $65,000 to $85,000 a year. So these are very good-paying jobs that we can offer this community, and we need this community. Because I can assure you, and I stand here today stating a fact, that Logier could not have become the nation's leading manufacturer of retail display shelving without the support of the North Omaha community. Today, Logier, like all businesses, but especially those in the North Omaha community, are faced with continued labor shortages and are challenged with hiring, recruiting, and retaining employees. For the past 60 years, we've watched a deterioration of the North Omaha community. The continued loss of affordable housing, reduced businesses, reduction of good-paying jobs have plagued this community. This needs to stop. The opportunity with the Forever North and 24th, excuse me, for Forever North and 24th and Lake redevelopment plans has the opportunity to change this narrative. These plans begin to address the lack of housing for seniors and the lack of new family homes for those that wish to move back into the community. These plans will help address safe, affordable housing for all families. The multimodal transportation system will also improve transportation for those individuals wishing to have transportation back and forth from the jobs that are brought into this community. These plans and funds would transform the northern part of our city, and we know investments like these, they work. We've seen it time and time again. We've seen it Blackstone, Midtown, Downtown, Benson and Exarban. These plans work. So I implore you to look at this plan to implement in the northern community, North Omaha. The investment back into our community is long overdue, and would yield many benefits for the entire city of Omaha and the metropolitan area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next proponent, please.
Hi, my name is David Hawkins. I'm a part of the team at Noma, 2510 Lake Street. I'm also speaking on behalf of myself, 2703 North 62nd Street. I'm a young professional musician here in Omaha, Nebraska, and music has always been a huge part of my life. I began drumming on pots and pans when I was two years old. I remember playing in drill teams around North Omaha and playing at church. But it wasn't until I was probably 16 years old that I was afforded the opportunities and resources that I needed to develop as a musician, and that was outside of my community growing up off of 40th and Ames. I had to go to Burke High School, which happened by chance. I'm glad it happened, but it happened by chance. And it was there that I met people that shared the same passions as I did, that gave me resources, that gave me mentorship, that opened my horizons to a lot of different things, not only in music, but also in life. It was a catalyst for the kind of person that I wanted to be. And it wasn't until that time that I realized that I could be it, that I could be a professional musician, that drumming was even something that I could do for a living. I had never met anybody in my life that made a living playing drums, but I did that. And I saw so many other things in this endeavor that I could do. And I realized a passion, but I also realized a dream that I didn't know I had. Beyond that, I realized I could do it. But none of that happened where I lived. None of that was a perspective that I was able to see walking outside or hanging out with my friends, or doing something down the street, or even going to my community centers. It was sports, it was basketball, it was church, good things, but that was it. And even now, as a young professional, I'm in a position where I have to look at moving elsewhere and going to New York, going to Chicago, to develop my fullest potential as a musician. And for a city with as much musical depth and history and roots as Omaha, that shouldn't be the case. That's something I wish that I would have had when I was 2 to 16, that I could have dove into more and spent more time enjoying what I enjoy every day now, and it's something that I'm still in search of now. It's something that I wish that, you know, my friends that made other choices, that had some of the same inclinations that I did, but they never got to see those perspectives, so they chose to do other things. And every day, I run into somebody that, you know, we were beating on tables together, we were making up songs on the playground, but they're doing something that is never going to take them outside of where they are, or they're going down here, or I can't talk to them because they're dead or they're in jail. And that really could have been me. I was at a crossroads where my parents told me that, that's part of why I went to Burke, we won't say by chance. My parents took me out of the environment that I was in because they had to. Because they had to do that to show me and put me in a position to realize the stuff that I was supposed to be. That shouldn't have to happen. For me, it was music, so that's all that I can speak to, but there are things that are happening in North Omaha that would greatly benefit from these plans, and I'm a strong proponent of the 24th Lake Street redevelopment, as well as Forever North. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Other proponents, please.
I promise I'll be brief. I tend to be long-winded, so definitely will be brief. My name is Mitch Strong. I'm the Neighborhood Revitalization Manager at Habitat for Humanity, 1701 North 24th. I'm originally from New York, New York City, and I came out here to Lincoln for school a long, long time ago, 1992. And something happened to me there that Ernie Chambers actually helped me out with, made regional news, national news, and I did not like Nebraska after that. But moving back to Nebraska and coming back to Omaha, you know, I'm so proud to be here, and I call Nebraska, Omaha, my home. I've done a lot over the past couple of years for people of Omaha, for people that are coming in from Omaha, refugees from around the world. And I want you to know, especially in North Omaha, that there's so much untapped talent there. Untapped talent that will benefit not only North Omaha, but the whole city of Omaha, which a lot of people don't realize. However, if you have underdeveloped areas, it's not gonna help anyone, especially the people that live in that area. You know, it doesn't matter where that is. If you have generational, underdeveloped areas in West Omaha, North Omaha, South Omaha, there's gonna be problems. And when you have problems like that, you're not gonna tap into that talent, you know, the people that come from those areas, so much talent. And I think right now is a perfect time to really see what Omaha can do on a national level, on an international level. And it takes just one little thing, and is developing areas that you can really help the people in, and those people will help themselves, and they will help Omaha. So, again, I said I was gonna be brief, and normally I'm not like that, but that's it.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. Thank you. Other proponents, please. Mr. Maroni, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Maroni. I'm the President of the Omaha Economic Development Corporation at 2221 North 24th Street. And I will also be brief. I've been, I'm a product of Omaha, actually I'm a product of North Omaha, been there all my life. All my adult life I've spent working in North Omaha. I've been aware of and involved in many of those plans that have come and gone. And I'd like to say that the biggest challenge has always been those plans. There's never been the will or the resources to implement those plans. We have an opportunity here now if we pass this plan, and I don't think there's been a bad plan. But like I said, the will to see those plans through and the resources to make it happen just was not there. It was lacking. I think the Forever North study and the redevelopment plan that's with it is another step in the right direction, but it'll only be meaningful if we're intentional and actually provide the will and the resources to make it sure that it's implemented. And I'm in support of both the Forever North study and the redevelopment plan that's before you.
Thank you. Next proponent, please. And to give you a sense, how many more proponents do we have that are going to speak? Couple more? Okay.
Luis Humana, 2709 Dewey Avenue. Is, are you, the plan available? I don't, I was trying to use my phone, but I couldn't access the Forever North plan. Anyway, I agree with the comments that that was community engagement. One particular item was that they would do a double session or have multiple hours of availability with the city personnel so that people can attend and ask questions. So I thought that was, that was good. I also want to support the amendment. I don't know if you guys are going to, are going to move for it. But there's two amendments, and I did read it. And I think that moving from here, if you're only going to listen to the Business Improvement District, as it's listed here on the amendments, younger generations and emerging leaders, arts, history, and cultural stakeholders along North 24th Street, property owners and renters, technical staff from the city MAPPA and Metro Transit, elected and appointed officials, representatives from community groups and organizations along North 24th Street, such as the Empowerment Network and North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, N O N A, and other community groups and organizations approved by the B I D and members of the F N I C. I think that would populate the committee well. Because I did attend the development of the plan a few years ago, and these are familiar faces. The point about having the community involved in the, I don't know, what's the next step, the execution? I think that's a very good point, and I think the amendment to create the committee and then have the council member, even have the power to approve all appointees to the committee, I think that would be some good oversight. I support that. I look forward to further development in the area because it's needed. There's, we talk about vacant lots, and that's true. You don't have to go far in the area to see a vacant lot. And, you know, that's something that is going to take money to happen, to get development there. So my last point would be about art. I saw the concepts on page 46 and 47. And I don't know if the new structures that would be proposed in this particular area represent like incorporating artistic components into the development. So I think that's going to be very important. Even the commercial developers and all the property owners of the buildings should focus on working with local artists to put up their art in their premises and property. And yeah, overall, I thought it was a good process. I hope that there are more people that get involved and that there was a lot of education happening during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents, please. Mr. Barney, come on down. And we have one proponent by Zoom after this, too.
Good afternoon, Council Willie Barney. Played different roles. But first of all, with the Empowerment Network, 2401 Lake Street. And then my wife and I also own two businesses now at the historic district, 24th and Lake Revive Center and the Carver Legacy Center. I just wanted to stand and first of all, I always believe in giving honor where honor is due. As Senator Chambers was speaking, made me think about his legislation to have district elections at the city, county, state level and the impact that that's made on the city to have representation. So we want to recognize that. We just heard a couple of speakers ago from Michael Maroni. Working alongside Michael for the last 15 years, I've seen what he's put in and others have put into this work. If you look at 24th Street, even though we know that there's more work that needs to be done, but if you start at coming, 24th and coming, and you look at the McDonald's, and you look at C H I, and you look at the learning community, and you look at the Omaha Star Building, and you look at Fairdew Village, and you look at where the union is, and you look at many of the things that have happened along 24th Street to create the catalyst movement for where we are now. A lot of that was really done with the hands of Michael Maroni, his team. And so I just really want to first of all, honor his work and the legacy he continues to build along 24th Street. I also want to recognize a partner that's been along with us for the last 15 years, Vicki Quates Ferris. The work and time that she's put in. We were a part of one of those plans 10 years ago, the North Omaha Village Plan. And I want to recognize Manny and his team, the fact that they recognized that that plan, that they were building on it with the Forever North Study. We had some conversations just in the last few days. I was down in Lincoln. And as Mr. Maroni said, one of the key critical components of this whole thing is once the plan is there, how is it implemented? How are the funds aligned? So I'm excited to see that this is really an acceleration moment. When we worked together 10 years ago to get the village plan to a point where it was approved unanimously by the city council, one of the goals was to be a catalyst in anticipating that the 800-plus people that helped build and develop that plan would be a catalyst to the next plan. But that plan would be the implementation phase. And so there's been a lot of work done in between the last 10 years. I don't think people realize that the union didn't exist at 24th and Lake. The Fairdew Village didn't exist. The learning community didn't exist. So now with the work of Manny, Spark, O E D C, Carmen, the Carnation Ballroom, and many of those components that are moving into place, and to hear Logier, to hear the work that C H I is doing, now jobs are coming back into the community. This is really that moment that we've all been working towards. And I just want to again echo the comments from Mr. Maroni that this is the time also, once this plan, and we're hopeful that it will be approved unanimously. There's many things that are on the table right now, projects that are on the table that this plan will help accelerate. But we will also be back collectively seeking the level of investment from the city, county, and state to accelerate this progress because now is the time. And I've said many times standing at this podium, and someone said it earlier today, that when North Omaha wins and South Omaha wins, this whole city wins. We, the other piece is there's an equity study that was done by MAPPA, and it was reinforced by Equity, the policy link. It says that $4 billion, and this is going back five years ago, but $4 billion of economic activity will be added to this region when North and South Omaha reach equity with the rest of the city. If that was five years ago, I would imagine it's probably $6 billion that would be added to the economy when North and South Omaha receive the level of investment. So I just want to say thank you, a prayerful that'll be the unanimous vote today of both plans. And we stand in support of an implementation team that will take this forward. So thank you so much for your time and want to thank the Forever North Implementation Group that will be formed beyond this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for your work, too. Other proponents in the audience. Seeing none, I want to go to the proponent on Zoom. Ms. Krieger, you're recognized. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Here we go. Try that.
Thank you, President Vesterson. Jennifer Krieger, Greater Omaha Chamber, 808 Conagra Drive, Suite 400, 68102. I have a short letter from David Brown. Dear President Vesterson and members of the council, the Greater Omaha Chamber is pleased to offer this letter in support of the city of Omaha's Forever North Housing and Multimodal Transportation Strategy. In 2017, we engaged our members to envision what it will take to ensure our region's economic strength into the future. The resultant Greater Omaha 2040 Initiative focuses on people, place, and prosperity and suggests a high-quality built environment is essential to attracting talent and supporting business growth. More recently, we partnered with Metro Transit, the Metropolitan Area Planning Agency, and cross-sector group of civic leaders called Metro Smart Cities to develop a new regional transportation strategy, Connect Go. The economic benefit of building walkable neighborhoods connected by diverse transportation options is a foundational element of that initiative. The city of Omaha's Forever North Strategy is well-positioned to catalyze inclusive economic growth in a part of our city that has experienced significant disinvestment over the past several decades. We look forward to seeing the results of its implementation. Regards, David G. Brown, President and CEO. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll now move to opponents. Any opponents that want to speak today?
Hello, my name is Gwen Easter. I live at 2895 Benny Street in Omaha, in North Omaha. I grew up in North Omaha. I decided to come down here and speak because I'm not going to say that I'm against this plan. But what I'm against is how all these plans have affected my life and other people's life. Everyone wants to talk about the plan that they put together 10 years ago. Well, that plan hurt my business, my organization, my livelihood. I had two daycares, two daycares. I still have one housed in the same place. I had a little small T-shirt and little store that I turned my garage into a nice little store that I worked hard for. I started my organization and my daycare in 1999. And my day, excuse me, my organization in 1999 and my daycare in 2000. I was an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer before then, tutoring kids in Omaha Public Schools system. So I created a housing program, a tutoring program for kids. I had an adult G E D E S L program. I've done over 15, 15 Safe Night Youth Rallies since starting my organization. I started out in a small little house in North Omaha, and I worked my way to buy, buy my, purchase my property on Thursday and Benny. I had teachers, volunteers, staff. I tutored kids who was dyslexic. I tutored adults who were dyslexic. I had teachers doing the same thing, helping. A work for, a work experience program, helping parents. Worked with DHS and many, many organizations, Lutheran Families, Heartland Family Services, Lutheran. All these different organizations sending their clients to my programs when there were no one helping families and children in my community, in my area. And then here we go. Here comes people to come in my community, start the learning community and other programs, duplicated my programs and services, pushed out my daycare business and want to act like my organization and daycare is irrelevant. The financial hardship that I have gone through, I almost lost my home and my property because of people's development, because of people's plan that is still today affecting my life. The disrespect that I have had to happen to me. Let's talk about also the over 200 private childcare business owners who worked just as hard as I did for my organization and my daycare and served this community with all my heart. Everybody want to be proud about what they've done to accomplish certain things at the price of other people suffering. There are people who lost their homes, their businesses, when all we tried to do was help people. I supported those that stood up here, a lot of them that stood up here and talked about all of what they've done. When I was that young entrepreneur, I went to Mr. Maroni's business program. They saw me work hard to get my business and my daycare going and my organization that I freely did. I'm going to speak for the voices that don't have a voice, the low-income families who are being pushed out of our community. We can say genification, you know, we don't want to be genified out of our community. I almost lost everything because of other people's plan for our community. People who don't even live there, didn't grow up there, don't know the struggle that we went through. The lack of disrespect that we have had all these years. Of course, we want things to be developed in our community. We want jobs, and we want companies, and we want all of those things that every other organization, every other district has in their community. But we don't want to be pushed out of our community. People duplicate my programs and then want to act like liars who want to sit up there and act like they've just been working hard, paving the way, doing things when they know they lying. I supported a lot of people in this community, a lot of organizations. I got behind their plan, not even realizing they were coming to take my business away from me, lose my home. I forgave them people. I really did. I had to do a lot of soul searching and a lot of praying and ask God to help me to forgive these people because all I really tried to do was help people in my community because I understood what the problems was in my community because I lived there. I grew up there. So I'm saying to you all, while y'all putting your plan together, what about the people who live there? What about the people that's being displaced? Affordable housing? Why is it that we can't define affordable housing? Because that property that's up on 30th Street that everybody's so proud of, it's not affordable for everybody. Somebody making $9 or $10 an hour doesn't have a voucher from the Omaha Public Housing. They can't afford to live there. One of my programs that I made sure that I kept was my housing program that I've had for 23 years. And I get calls every day from people that call 211. A lot of families are struggling, can't pay their bills. Some of these people are living in their houses, living on their family couches or friend. And at any moment in any day, they can be put out of their homes. But we want to talk about affordable housing. These apartments are not affordable. Where's in the plan that's going to guarantee that we're going to get to stay in our community? Where's the plan that's going to guarantee that those families that had to move out? And what about our daycare businesses that we're having compete with free, free daycare down the street that they so proud of? A lot of these, it's not even teaching our children, want to push sexual things upon our kids and all kinds of stuff. I want to know what plan do you all have to make sure that we as a community stay in our community? Because what I'm looking at is a lot of people moving in and a whole bunch of us moving out. I'm not against development, and I'm not even against the hard labor that these people have worked for. But you know what? Remember us, too. Remember those that was forerunners who came, came before all of y'all, before you came over here and duplicated our programs and our services. Every time I turn them around, we all getting downplayed every time. We got to prove ourselves. We got to prove ourselves to the legislature. We got to prove ourselves. We worked hard. I worked hard for everything that I have. And I'm still going through. And I'm still going through. I'm still dealing with things because of people's plans. You talk about y'all coming and talking to the community when mostly you're talking to, to, to your little partnerships. You're not thinking about the cost of, of everything. They didn't care, they didn't care that we was losing our businesses, downplaying other people's businesses. The childcare industry, that's one business that we strived in. We, we, black people, uh, uh, was, was dominating in, and they had to come and try to take that away, to put up these centers who's sitting up here, uh, uh, researching our children. Nobody saying nothing. And don't talk to me about the white man, because black people helped push my business out. I worked hard for everything.
Ms. Easter, I'm going to have you make sure addressing us, and could you summarize your comments, please? We've had, um, others take a two-two, and Councilmember Light's on.
I'm done. All I want to say is this, before y'all pass this plan, I would like y'all to think about those, those low-income families that need affordable, real affordable houses. I want y'all to think about the, the struggle and the work. I would like to get back to working with my families and my children like I was, but I got to go up here and come down here and do all this stuff, while I try to figure out how to get kids back in my business because of people's plan. So think about the low-income families and people who have a voice, because they have a voice too. They residents of this community too.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? CNN Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wow, what an exciting day. Such beautiful experiences that have been told historical significance to 24th Street has been echoed by many testimonies that have come up today at the mic to share their joy, their excitement about looking at these two strategies or two proposals that we're looking at. One being the 24th Street Development Plan and the other one, the Forever North Strategic or Strategy. Just want to say again, I thank everyone for coming today and, and sharing unity and, and working together collectively to look at where we're going to be going in the next 10 years. We all have concerns about displacement. We all have concerns about the African-American history and culture being lost. Many of us are concerned that it will take 10 years for reliable public transportation to occur going north to south. But the overall, the overreaching strategy here is very exciting. A lot of thought was given to it. I would like to thank Manny for working on this in 2019 and present day. I would also like to thank City Planning for being thoughtful and engaging in this. And yes, you guys have done improvements in terms of public outreach, particularly toward this strategy. We kind of got a little bit out of whack here today. We do have two amendments that was, should have been put before us before we went into the, to, the two, one says resolution, one says ordinance. Okay. Before we get into that, and that was an Amendment C, and that would be to allow your city representative to be a part of this steering committee, which is also called the Implementation Committee. Can you hear me? Oh, okay, so, again, we kind of got out of, out of alignment. The first thing we want to talk about is the Amendment A or Amendment C, which would allow me to be a part of the Steering Committee. I would also like to echo on the fact that that's, this is kind of like out of order because a city representative really shouldn't have to ask to be a part of a committee. That should just be automatic. But for some reason, we decided to do this to provide unity. And not only the city saying, hey, it's time for a new day, time for North Omaha to have its day, for a significant change in North Omaha. It wanted, we wanted to put these two amendments forth to you to unify the community and get the City of Omaha behind that support by saying, hey, we're going to have the representative there, and then the other section would be that that representative would also pick who would be a part of that committee. The long history that we have in, in North Omaha, in District 2, we are unable to, you know, just haphazardly implement these plans. Like Michael Maroney said, there has been a lot of development plans placed forth in North Omaha, and it is very important that the implementation of this plan is done intentionally. We would want that plan to be well-thought-out. We would want participation in the community to bring this forth. So my first motion would be on number C, would be to, again, signify unity in the community by assuring my participation into the Implementation Committee and being a member there. So I move that we do that.
I'll second the motion to approve 13C. Are you, are your remarks complete for now?
Yes.
By seconding the motion, I'll just add that I'm also quite encouraged by all the testimony here today and all the partnerships that are represented here today. Councilmember Johnson and I participated on the State of North Omaha call about three weeks ago with over 400 people involved in that discussion, most of whom are here, or lots of whom are here.